Proposal really for our water field lighting, LED lighting. I invited them to come back and present it, but so far they have it sewn up because they have not allowed enough travel time. We'll go in and start and get our meeting called order for the afternoon. McKenzie Jones sat at this table some time ago and he is a partner in LED Solutions out of Birmingham and they wanted to come and do some proposals about LED lighting. Tony was thoughtful enough to suggest that he check on lighting for our Little League fields, LED lighting. He actually took awhile to get back to us with a proposal, but based on that suggestion, he's going to bring us a proposal for our LED changeover at the Little League fields, which we think will be a good thing. But so far, he's not shown up today, even though I replied when he sent me a message that we'd be working a workshop this afternoon and invited him to come on. So, maybe he couldn't make it today, but he wants to come. If y'all are interested in hearing what it might cost us to change that over, we'll let him come at a later date if he does show today. We talked a good bit about water and sewer rates and item two has to do with this. Rodney and Alan have been working a good deal to get information together that shows us a better picture of what we can see about our water. With that said, I'm going to bow to them and let them make the presentation to our council. I just wanted to suggest, maybe before they give us their synopsis of our water rates, I did pull last year's influx that the city did for the water department, it's 385,000 in the last fiscal year 19. Thus far, in this fiscal year, we've put 186 in four months to the water department. So, that's to keep them where they can pay their current bills and operate. So, with that said, I'm going to let Alan and Rodney... By the way, y'all have a little sympathy for Rodney. He's recovering nicely, but he had a chance to really get hurt the other day up working on the job trying to improve a sewer situation we got in town. Rodney got trapped by a vehicle and knocked down to the ground and slightly injured. So, we're letting him recoup a bit this week while he works. We didn't give him no time off, of course. You only get time off for good behavior and if we don't get that very often, it's okay. We're not going to give him much time off. Okay, with that said, I'll quit being funny here. Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, I'm going to look at some numbers and of course, any questions about operations, of course Rodney will know that, but I want to go over some numbers. We did a handout, each one of you should have it. Let me go over a few things with you. For our year ended 9/30/19, our operating expenses to run water and sewer was $2,380,446. For the previous year, for the year ended 9/30/18, it was $2,110,358. So, we had an increase in expenses of $270,088, or 12.79% increase in expense. Our revenues, which are down below that, increased by only 1%. As you can see, that trend is not good for the long-term financial health of the water and sewer board. As Bob mentioned, and I repeated here, we transferred $385,000 from the city general fund into the water and sewer department in the year ended 9/30/19 for their operations. Through December, we had transferred 150,000. I think Bob just updated that to 186,000 through January. So, that trend is continuing this year, actually at a little faster clip. I figured our cost of water, including all cost of providing water, various salaries, chemicals, equipment, depreciation on equipment, everything that we do, and it's come to $5.40 per thousand gallons of our cost. Then I've got some sales numbers, how many gallons we sold, 266,000, 1,000. We wholesale, 26,000. About 10% of our water that we sold was wholesale water. The dollar amounts, even though of just water sales, that's not including, we have some rental income, we have some setting up new meters, we have other revenues, but just of sales of water, our water revenues were $1,474,452 and our wholesale water sales was $49,123. So, our wholesale business is a very small part of our operations. We do do about $49,000 worth of wholesale. We don't have good cost numbers on what it costs to wholesale, but basically, we don't have any additional salaries involved in that. Rodney and I talked about it, if we have any, we don't have any equipment right now that we bought specifically to wholesale. In the future, if we do have to buy equipment, our late pipe, or anything, we talked about when the contracts come up, we probably need to have a line charge over whatever period of time Rodney sees fit to recover our actual cost out of pocket and then price our water if we can make a profit. But right now, our wholesale sales are just simply being to gain some additional revenue for our system. And you can see, it's right now, not a big part of our system. We did $49,000 worth of sales last year on wholesale, mainly to the Marion County system and I think you and... Our loss, I figured the loss on our water operations, about $195,000. Our sewer operation lost about $272,276. That's our revenue, so that's our sewer expenses. And down below that, just to give you sort of an idea, we've got 1,139 customers on sewer and we lost about $20 a month per customer on the sewer operations. The next page is our water rate. As you can see, we have a minimum bill for the first 2,000 gallons. So, our cost for 1,000 gallons is about $5.40. So, you can see, after you pay the minimum, after the next 2,000 to 10,000 gallons, the next 10,000 to 25,000 gallons for our big users, we're actually losing money on those operations because those amounts are lower than our cost of water. So, if we did any adjusting of rates, we certainly need to look at some of our volume And our volume discounts are just, you know, not there because our cost of water is higher than what we're getting for some of the bigger users. You can see, we're getting $4.29 per thousand. Then it goes down as the volume increases. And with our cost at $5.40 per thousand, we're not recovering our cost on those items. Another thing I ran, just some sort of, anything I see on water rates of what other towns are doing, I usually cut them out. And a year ago, I cut out this, was in the paper, about an increase in Windfield's rates in February of 2019. And then the other day, in this month, in January of 2020, they did another increase. And the thing interesting about what they're doing, we bill our sewer at 50% of our water. They bill theirs at 100% of water. And as you see, their volume users, they charge them $5 per thousand, no matter what their volume is. After the minimum 2,000 gallon minimum, they charge $5 per thousand after that. No volume discounts whatsoever. Just to give you an insight on what other systems are doing. And you know, I said that our cost increased 12.79%, they did an 11% increase from 19 to 20 on their system. So, everybody's costs are increasing, not just ours, but them, it's something in the water business with the, I think Rodney can explain it better, but we're now over 10,000 users, as far as the way A.D.M. figures users, based on our number of meters. And we're under a little more regulation, a little more regulation that we have to go through. But our loss, we're losing more on sewer than we are water. So, if we wanted to look to change that, sewer would be naturally the first thing we'd look at. Our volume users, they use a lot of volume, we're losing money on their water usage. Our bigger users, we're actually not recovering our cost on volume. And you know, big volume, the more they use, the bigger the volume, the more we lose, as you see, the way our prices.
It's kind of the reverse.
So...
Ideally.
So, I brought these figures for you to look at and of course, any operation questions, Rodney can answer. Me and him already went over these figures and talked considerably about what, you know, potential changes that might be made to get to where the water and sewer department is on his own making, you know, trying to get it as sufficient as we can.
Is there questions to Mr. Cantrell concerning this presentation? Does everybody understand what he's just told us?
It's not hard to do, since they're losing money on everything.
Losing money, exactly.
That's why I kept putting this back on the table, is that it was alarming me that when this co-accountant comes to see us and tells me how much I've got to cut a check for to cover our negative balance in the water department, it's alarming to me. No fault of Rodney's, we haven't supported him when we should have. We made this one increase, it's been nine or 11 years since we'd had an increase. We didn't even get it up to a break even when we adjusted it. But we basically are going to dig hard at the general fund when we make this choice to move forward on this increase. Birmingham's this week's been on the news, they're proposing an increase in water rates for their water. And they've been bankrupt in their operation where we're headed to in ours. Because they didn't properly manage it, they've actually faced bankruptcy in their water and sewer programs in Jefferson County and greater Birmingham. So, I don't want us to wait till it's too late to make these adjustments. Rodney, what do you think about it? You hadn't said anything to us yet.
Well, the biggest concern I have is, I've always been asked, why can we not make money on sewer? Of course, you're only charging 50% of the water rates for the sewer rate. But the problem, the biggest problem is, you only have 1,139 customers on water, where you have 3,500 on sewer, then you've got 3,500 on water and you've got 1,100 on sewer. It's costing as much money to operate the sewer part of it as it is the water part. And that's why we lose so much more on sewer, is it's only 50% of the water rate and there's only 1,139 customers paying.
Of those customers, how many of them are commercial and how many are residential?
I had that one time, on commercial, let's see, no residential, approximately 930 customers. Commercial, approximately 255 customers on commercial. So, the majority of your customers is on residential.
And the commercial rate is the same as the residential rate?
Everything right now, 50% across the board.
How much would it, if we raised it 25%, how much would that break us even? Like you said, most people are getting 100%.
Yeah, and I did this back in some time ago, when I did a presentation before. I looked at raising residential 60% to commercial 80. With that being done...
I've got that sheet, if you knew.
Well, I've got it right here. With that being done, total increase in revenue on sewer would approximately be $114,495. So, that's 114,000 and we're 272,000 this last year in the hole.
Well, we're going to have to double that then to get it up there.
Alan and I, as I talked today, as he said, if we went 100% across the board on sewer rates, that would eliminate that deficit there. That's what you told me, it would eliminate that sewer deficit.
How much would that make for sewer?
Whatever your water bill is, that's what your sewer bill would be. If your water bill is 50, your sewer bill would be 50. And that's what the majority of systems are going to now, because everybody's losing money on sewer.
Well, we definitely going to have to do something.
Like I said, like Windfield's already been doing it for over two years.
They're at 100% on...
But personally, I'm ready to bite the bullet. I meant, we ain't biting the bullet, I meant, we can't give it away.
No.
I mean, if they don't want it, they can put them in a separate tank. I mean, that's all I am. What else can you do? We can't keep giving it away.
Three years ago, Rodney asked me for a backhoe. Rodney don't have a backhoe today. I put him off. He's repairing and working with what he's got. So, I mean, we're trying to be as conservative, we've had to get a couple of pickups because he had to push his sewer cleanout thing to one side because the truck quit before they got there. So, we've had to buy some pickups, but we've not bought equipment that he really wanted or needed in some cases. It's not that we're just throwing money away, it's that we can't break even. That's what I'm trying to sell today and Alan's illustration backs that up fully. 195,000 loss in water operation and 272,000 in the sewer operation.
And we don't have near as many sewer customers as we do water.
That's right.
I mean, know what we're about.
That's why the revenue's not as great and...
And Alan brought another thing to my attention today. On the rate sheet, on the second page that we handed out, the 2 to 10,000 is $4.29 per thousand, which comes out to $20.38 for a minimum bill. You could adjust that, not by adjusting the minimum part of the bill, just adjusting the categories over here on the left-hand side. You know, if you went from, instead of 2,000 to 10,000, go 2,000 to, after 2,000, up to 25,000 and skip that 10,000 part, you know, you could change those numbers on the higher you go. Or you could do like Windfield and go $5 per thousand after 2,000 gallon. Because we know now what it's costing us to produce it, basically.
And I mean, we're going to have to go up on all that across the board rate to break even because at $2,000, of 2,000 gallons, at $5.40 a gallon, we're losing money if somebody uses 2,000 gallons of water and we're charging $20.38 and it's costing $22 for us to make it, I mean, we're losing money. So, we've got to adjust that to the bare minimum.
We can give them 2,000 gallons to $10.80, it's $5.40 a thousand. But our minimum bill, in my opinion, needs to go up. It's hard to sell water at a loss, anywhere, any way you consider it. It's costing about that, $5.40 a gallon, we shouldn't sell it cheaper than that in volume or any other way. You can't get a bigger truck and make it work out. That's just the way it is, isn't it?
And Alan brought out another point today with me. The $5.40 is not really relevant to our wholesale water because our wholesale is not...
We don't maintain, we don't have a maintenance system for them. We just sell them the product.
And we've got chemicals in that water, but the chemicals are not costing $5.40.
It's the operation that's costing about.
Yeah, we're paying the operators anyway and this is extra water that they're producing that we're selling and we're making a little money off the wholesale. And that's not to say we don't want to go up some on wholesale, we can. And I told Rodney, because contracts are coming up, you know, if we have to spend anything for equipment, personnel, or lines, you know, we'll do a separate monthly fee for that, whether they buy water or not, where we can recover our out-of-pocket cost. Then there's other wholesalers of water, Bear Creek, other systems, that we need to be at least competitive, you know, close to what they're selling for.
Thanks.
But we're not losing on that.
I understand.
And we'll look at that when it comes up, maybe in April, when our contracts are coming up.
Right.
There's no use of us sitting here thinking about it or whatever. We have to do something that should have been done years ago. Nobody had guts enough to do it. I guess that's it.
Well, we just now, we just now got the facts. This is what we needed to make a decision. We needed to know our true numbers, our cost of operation. We needed to know what it would take to get us there. Now, we know, and I think it'd be, you know, I've already made a commitment in my heart, I hadn't got with Rodney and his crew that changed those meters, but I've done said in Bob's heart, we're going to, by June 1st, we're going to have every broken meter in Hamilton replaced and repaired or else. I've got to have all the meters up and running and metering correct on this water by the 1st of June. And that's, I've pledged that to meet and I'm going to ask these guys for that rate when it changed the meters. We've got three guys that basically, that's part of their duties and I'm going to talk with them, me and Rodney and them together, and I'm going to tell them, we've got a deadline on getting all of our broken meters working in that big June 1st. That's my goal. I've already said it in my mind, I hadn't even shared it with Rodney yet, but we've discussed it, we just haven't got there yet. We've had excuses for not getting them repaired. We're going to get way past the excuses and get it done. But the rates themselves is what I wanted to bring to you today for your consideration. And I'd like to get a proposal as early as next Monday. And I may need you back, Alan, at the Monday meeting to see if this makes sense. I want us to talk seriously about doing this in action Monday night. And I'm going to visit with you after this meeting to try to help me get a proposal to them that makes sense, so we can get this taken care of. I will not beat this dead horse again. If it doesn't happen from this meeting, it's not, I'm not bringing it back up because that's as clear as I can paint the picture.
How about you coming up with what we need to raise it to? And don't raise it, just, you know, raise it to what it's...
Take more work in.
Yeah, that's right. We need to, you know, we don't want to have, we raised it up there to where we're going to make a little off of it and maybe it'll be the last time it'll have to be raised for awhile.
This is...
Might we bite the bullet and do it and let the other bunch then ride on free because it's got to be done and somebody's got to do it. It's just, it's been, well, you've been here, you know, it's been let go. None of them running again, everybody running, they don't want to raise and make somebody mad. Well, it's not made, I mean, they've got, it's got to be paid for. And the taxpayers are bad.
This is not a punish your citizens episode. This is trying to get us to where it makes sense what we're doing in our operation. And what we're doing makes no sense at all, going in the hole like this. It's punishing Rodney and his operation, trying to, he don't want to ask the general fund to fund his department, he wants his operation to fund his department. And it's just, it's just not operating correctly right now and that's what we're trying to do.
If you know that, but you know if his employees get a raise anytime, well, that's got to be considered. I mean, that's coming out of whatever this water and sewer's been sold for. So, you got to consider that when you do this. Do it one time, so it won't have to be done for awhile. Because you know in the history, the next five years to 10 years, it's going to go on up higher even. I don't want to be around to listen to it.
We were forced in the last year. We were forced to change our method of purifying our water. Our lime and Alum products, the lime was not obtainable anymore. Rodney was buying the best product he could get and they had to beat the hoppers to get it to feed into the water so it would purify the water. We had to change system, so we found another certified type of system, but it caused us to have to buy a different chemical and do away with feeding the lime into the water.
And that chemical is, is more expensive than what we were using, but we're using less of it. So, we're basically coming out about even as far as that goes, as far as the cost of the chemical.
But these maintained a clean water certificate for the past 18 or 19 years and that's our goal, this always, because of our tests. Because of our tests, we've maintained that, the tests we send in. But the operation is what we're talking about today. It's underwater. It's underwater bad, and it's gotta be changed. We've got to bring something to the table to amend this. Any suggestions how we get there? Miss Tammy, you're looking at your numbers.
I'm gonna have to think about it.
How long?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow. I'll email you something tomorrow.
Okay. All right, let's talk to Alan when you can.
And Alan, and I'll email it to all three of you.
And Rodney suggested, if you want me on the loop, bring me on the loop.
Bring us in the loop because I'm putting it up there where it ought to be. I'm not fault putting it to where if you're gonna run for something now, if you're scared of it, because it needs to be fixed now. It shouldn't go on and giving a waste of when it just can't go on. I mean, it's your business, you wouldn't do it. It's my business, they have to pay for it for me to have a profit and pay my help. This is what this amount says. You're selling a product. And I know Alan told me over ten years ago, he said, if you can ever get to where you need to be and then do one or two percent a year after that, you'll stay in good shape. But we've never gotten yet to where we need to be on those. And if we can get there, we can do like other systems do, that unit goes up two percent every year. Every January, they go up two percent. And that way it incurs what their expenses. But see, the people don't realize it when you go up two percent each year. When you go up twenty-five percent, then it's a different story. You go up two, three percent each year on your product, I don't pay them attention to it. I think, well, I just used that much more and go on. Don't know, of course, I wouldn't think about it anyway, but that, that's just the way it is. And that's what's happening in this world today. It's not gonna get any cheaper.
No.
Takes too much for people, your employees have got to have a raise because everything's going up.
On your overtime that's been figured into these operating expenses, was the overtime greater for sewer problems or for water problems?
Rodney probably know better than that. Do you know Rodney?
The overtime, but we figured that.
Right. But I mean, I'm wanting to know was the, is there a...
It's more on the water side, the overtime.
Overtime's greater on the water side.
Many more customers.
Yeah, but I was thinking about the, like, the big problems that they've had at the sewer. I would think without way the smaller at the water.
And that's a lot. The water's three times, but the sewer...
What I see in this is our cost of operations, since we've, this group's been in here, we've reworked the wastewater treatment plant, brought it up to good standards, got new drying beds, we've put new vacuum systems in our bats up there at the water purification. We've incurred all those expenses. So, that, a lot of our maintenance, big maintenance that should have been done, has been done. Rodney's got a new computer that is a water treatment plant. This lime and alum simply ate his other computer alive, and they had to replace it. It got to where it wouldn't function at all. We don't have that problem with all that dust that we had. So, anyway, a lot of the things we've done are helpful as far as maintenance items, but our cost of operation is just not fair, and that's what we're trying to address. So, keep that in mind. And we want, we want every meter that meters water that we charge for that's broken. If it's broken, we have to go with a minimum bill. We want, we want that metered and charge the bill that applies to that household.
How much, oh, how much debt is out on non-payment?
I would have to look and see.
You talking about monthly billing?
Does that something has to be considered, you know, how much, how much?
I'd ask them if the bill isn't paid to lock those meters.
Yeah, and we do that.
People sometimes skip down a legal bill, but after so many days, we go out there and physically lock that meter till that bill's paid up to date or some arrangement to get it current is made. And we hold them to the line if we make an arrangement with them.
And we're charging all of our reconnect fees and...
We charge the reconnect fees. What are your fees for going out?
We actually went up a few years ago to twenty-five fifty on reconnect fee, on fifty-dollar
Rodney often has to take his personal time and go back out there and unlock those meters. And he don't get a cent more for doing that, but he goes and does it.
So, it's been changed since this?
Yeah. Is that, does that say?
This says February of seventeen.
Been changed to fifty dollars. Reconnect fee, yeah, fifty dollars.
Can you lock them after they're two months still, anyway?
Yeah. How much do you think is going to have to go up in percentage-wise? For the long term of the system, the sewer is gonna have to be, I mean, that's where we're really losing a lot of money. I don't know if we have to go up to a hundred percent, but it looks like that that's the direction that we need to go.
But you got some minimal water, people, then you have sewer.
Yeah. That, and the sewer, the water, we're selling a lot of volume at less than our cost, so we'll have to fix that. And, but it would take nearly, to go on fifty percent of the water bill to a hundred to make the sewer profitable on the sewer side. It would actually, we're two hundred and seventy-two in the hole, that would bring in another three hundred and fourteen thousand, I think. So, we would actually be a profit. If we went a hundred percent from fifty percent to a hundred, it would put the sewer in a profit situation. And then I would just have to do the numbers on what we'd have to increase the volume users on the water to get to that situation. But I can, I can do those numbers, see where we get there. And, you know, when we increase water, that increases your sewer some, so it's tied to one another.
So, we actually wouldn't have to go up on the sewer fifty percent?
Probably a hundred percent. It's possible, depending on how much we increase the water.
Right, yeah.
And do those volume increases. And if we went up to on the minimum bill, we just run those and see. I've had Rodney's run them before through our bivin' system, just scenarios to see if we went up this much, how much it'd bring in and so forth. I don't know if anybody else is for it or not. I am. Y'all come up with the figures that we need to...
At least we need to give our council a chance to make these amendments. If we vote it down, what we propose, and we're back at ground zero. If we find something we can consent on and feel good about and actually change the picture that we're looking at today, I'm very much for it. I'd like to see it amended because I just don't think it's good business to continue operating negative like we are, not even cutting our cost of operations.
Well, we're not doing our job. It's uncalled for. That's not what people elect us for. Of course, we're in here, but it's got to be stopped. I mean, if you had anyone in here that runs the business, it's gonna keep operating and lose money.
This council had enough wisdom and foresight to make an adjustment when we first came into office. We knew we had to make some adjustment. But we didn't have these facts before us when we made it. We did about what we thought that we could stand at that particular time, but we still didn't get ourselves to where we needed to be. This will put us close to where we need to be in the operation. Going forward, we'll have to make adjustments when necessary, but this will put us pretty close what we're proposing to do. We'll fine-tune it some before we bring it to the council for consideration, for a vote. If we even talk about it Monday night and we get it, just a few little things we have to tweak, you know, we, at least we know we're moving in the direction. But I'd like to handle this in the next couple of meetings. Propose something Monday night. If we decide to table it, we can table it. We decide we want to vote, we'll vote. But let's at least get it to that point. So, Alan, with that said, we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
We're gonna let you go unless anybody has other questions.
Okay. What we need to do? I will. I'll pay up with some numbers and get with Rodney, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. If anybody asks me, I'll say Rodney's done.
I'll dare it anyway.
It won't matter. You won't weigh that heavy on you. You only weigh, you get armed, get swam. At least that you left, you're right-handed, aren't you?
Yeah.
I think, I just don't understand why people wouldn't realize what's happening. This has not gone up in so many years. Go to the grocery store, buy a quart of milk, you find out, can't you?
We had a Mr. Sullivan call into the city hall a few days ago, and he said, me and my wife waited for five years for our new son to get here, and when he arrived, he came here with Lowe's Syndrome. This is a very rare disease that afflicts mostly youth. He was born with heavy cataracts on his eyes and inherited liver problems and other organ problems, some muscle development problems. What Mr. Sullivan's request was is we permit an awareness and fundraising event to, in honor of this child and the other three children in the state. There's only four children in this condition in the state of Alabama. But he wants a letter from the city saying it's okay to have this fundraising event in June. Well, then he was looking for a site, but now he's gone to the Bevel College and to the airport. He's gonna need a good bit of space because he's a long-distance trucker, and he's gonna put his truck in the deal, and about twenty other guys that have big semis are gonna display their, plenty of trucks up and displaying. The bikers are gonna come in with this group and have a group of bikers involved. There's most likely gonna be a ride at the end of this thing. They're gonna have a fun day at a fundraiser first at one of these locations. We don't think it'll be necessarily on city property, but he just has asked us to, he asked to contact our department to see if they'll put on some sort of display and get involved. And he's contacted our police department, and there are responses. We'll see what we can do. But his, his reason for contacting us first was that he thought he might be using city property, but when he called back, he said he thought he had that site settled without having to ask for city property. And he wants a permit to have this. And what we generally do is limit our fundraisers for individuals like your roadblocks. We have as few of those as possible because there's some dangers at a roadblock, passing the can, that kind of thing. And you get involved with a lot of individuals wanting to do this. We usually do it for groups like cheerleaders or the cross-country or something like that. But this man was good enough to go first and ask for this permit, and unless y'all have some reason for us not to give him a permit, I think I'd like to say that the city of Hamilton, and I'd get Scott to help me with a disclaimer, we're not liable to the city by giving this letter sanctioning this, but we, at this point, don't even think he'll need our properties, any of our properties, to do this on because he needs a place to park all these big semis and he's got friends at the college that know the dean, and he's got some inroads to the airport folks, so he thinks that one of those sites will be where this will be held. But like I say, he's, according to him, I went online and looked at this disease online, Lowe's Syndrome, I'd never heard of it until he introduced me to it. He says there's three hundred children in the state, about one in five hundred thousand contract this disease or have this disease at birth.
So, what, he's not wanting to close the streets or use city property, so, I mean, what's...
I really, I really don't, hard to see what our function is at this point because when he first contacted me, he kinda wanted to have it at the Munson Wire site because it's a big field out there. He could put a lot of trucks and motorcycles in. He wanted to shabush hog and let him use that. But he's not looking at that site anymore, and he didn't, he said he didn't think the track would work, the football field, because, you know, it'd mess him up. He thinks the airport or the college campus around it would work, is what he's gonna do. There'll be some, probably some blow-up things like slides and bouncing things and things for kids. But he's just trying to get groups to come in and do what he can, but I don't know that he really needs us to do this, but he wanted the city to at least not frown on what he's doing. And I guess since there was gonna be a fundraiser involved, he didn't want us to discourage that either.
I've got some properties down there around the airport he could use, that I want a plumber to buy insurance on, you know, somebody got hurt on, you know, but it wouldn't cost him anything to use. That is a good bid.
That's good, you know, he may, he may need a site. He said, outside, out of mind, he said, the airport's area is more out of sight and people might not, he wants to get as visible as he can close to this main drag, and he said, if he could use the college area, it'd be preferable. The airport site is secondary because it's off the beaten path a little, and he wants us to be as visible as possible because there'll be a show, there'll be a big show of support is what he's gonna have around him.
You know, I say, that property comes out to the road down front.
Sure.
It can enter from there, and then that property, it goes all the way back to the airport.
Okay.
So, but I'd want it to be fixed where I don't want it to be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't mind, that's what, I don't want to charge him anything to use the property that I don't want it to be.
If we were to give a letter, I'd want it worded by our attorney so that we don't have...
He'd be welcome to use that.
...a liable clause in it, a little disclaimer in it. It's not a city event, and this is just to permit them to carry it forward. As far as I know, there'll not be any streets closed, barricaded, or anything like that for this. If he were to ask to do that, then I'd have to come back and clear this again.
Well, in general, I mean, you and Ronnie handle all the permits. I mean, they have to submit them thirty days in advance, and they have to give all the who's and what's and wins and wears and everything that's gonna be done, but, I mean, in general, you and, we don't ever see those.
Yeah.
I mean, they're submitted to Ronnie, and y'all discuss it, and everything's handled, you know, for a permit. So, I mean, I still don't, I guess I just don't understand.
Well, I just wanted to know more about it because there might be some discussion later. I didn't want it to be done without the awareness of this group.
And he might, if he's doing it in June, he may want to get in touch with the folks that have the car show at Bevel? And he might, if he's doing it in June, he may want to get in touch with the folks that have the car show at Beville. If they're gonna do that in the summer, you know, they usually do it on the last Saturday night, June, July and August, and they have the crews in down there. And I mean, if he's looking at June, he might want to talk to the car show people and talk to them.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'll call him back and put that in his ear. This is a one-day event. It'll be a Saturday event. And it's a one-day thing. Just for awareness for, well, it'll honor his son and the other three children in Alabama. But actually, it's an awareness and fundraiser event. And that's, that's the thrust of it. I'll get with Ronnie and make sure that if we do any kind of permits, that we clear off air, especially if he was gonna host it on city property. We're closing in on our census date. It's near, near, near. And so important, we have allowed this table to be used as a training facility during our business hours. There'll be some training going on for people that's gonna go out in the public and work. So I'm allowing some training to happen at this table on certain dates when we're not gonna be using the room. And they came yesterday and approved this site as a, as a good site. And they looked at our room and said it would work well for what they need. They're gonna be training a few people to go out and work and give them some tutoring and some lessons. We'll be doing some zoning. There'll be a public hearing for this zoning for CIS and possibly Mr. Ken Knight, Dr. Ken Knight that's across the creek. He's wanting to put his in this same zoning act. He's trying to sell his home and he wants it to be zoned where it, it needs to go commercial. It can go commercial also. But CIS is asking us to change the zoning on the Hodges' property next to the law office. The first house will be torn down. They're gonna build a five thousand square foot building, two-story with a storm shelter in it. And they're gonna build on the high ground. This down in there is probably gonna fall off into a flood zone along that branch. So they're gonna stay on the high ground only. And we met with them here this week concerning the inherent problems that go with a work area being traffic up to a hundred cars per day. And we walked through the logistics of that and they work eight to five. So the people going to the elementary schools done passed by. The workhands from Hamilton Home Builders, they're already going home when they get off in the evening. They've already gone in in the morning. So they're saying that they won't pose a hazard. Of course, DOT's gonna have to give them exit permits down there in front of the Hodges' property for those cars to exit. I'm sure they'll work all that out.
Now, what, that's gonna run into the school deal there at eight to, eight o'clock in the morning. Those, but that's the busiest time from seven-thirty to eight. That's, I mean, I, I'm not, again, I'm just saying, that is busy. And they're not all gonna be gone exactly eight o'clock. They're gonna be lined buses and everything, you know, that's, that's a busy place until about eight fifteen.
They've already met with the planning and zoning board and it's already running the newspaper and we're ready for a public hearing?
Not in the newspaper yet.
Okay, so we're not having a public hearing yet?
No, we won't have it till, till the night. We'll have a public hearing before we bring it to a vote as to whether or not we want to approve.
Okay, so they've still, the planning and zoning, what, meets the end of this month?
Zoning has met and looked at all the issues and recommended to send it to the board of, I mean, the board of the council. I'm not saying the council is still, I didn't mean to say board, to the council. So the next move is putting it with the council for the public hearing and then the vote.
Well, now, I'm not, again, I'm a hundred percent for it. But if they're gonna go from eight to five, now the five is gonna, that's, actually is when federal mogul and all this traffic comes out from down the hipwarden at factories. But I'm a hundred percent for them now. But as far as down there where that is, at eight o'clock in the morning, it's gonna be crowded. Y'all disagree with it, that's fine. But this road is gonna, and I, I want them to come. I'm a, I'm a hundred percent with them, you know. It's, it's gonna throw a lot of traffic in there at eight o'clock.
It's, it's a pretty big operation.
Yeah.
They've, they've got the fifty or so people still working over there at the other center now. But they won't, there's a certain date they've gotta be out of that building. And they wanna have, I think it's next year and a half, they've gotta get ready to move everybody over here. And they'll, they'll build for about eighty-five people, but they could go up to a hundred. But that's, they're, they'll have enough cubes, they work in cubicles, those people do. They'll have enough cubicles to work up to a hundred people in both buildings.
Well, I'm a hundred percent for them and a hundred percent for it. But that's gonna throw lots of traffic right down that path. And if you try to come the other way in, which there's, it's gonna be just as busy because of the school.
That was a big discussion at this table with the zoning folks the other night, was the traffic issue.
Yeah.
That was, that was the biggest issue.
Big problem. Like I say, I'm a hundred, I don't know about say, I'm, again, I'm a hundred percent for it. But it, it's gonna cause a problem down there.
They, they claim that they'll have at least four drives that will, will take the workforce out of here. They'll have two on this side of the building and two on that side of the building. But Lynn Mitchell was here and he said, "You better clear all that with the DOT because they may not give you two front street exits. They may make you have only one. So you better get all that cleared." And they're gonna submit a complete copy of the plans and all that stuff. The surveying and the plans are being, are there in the works right now.
But if they could do it thirty minutes different from the schools, you know, that would, that would about settle it. But when you throw all of that, that's a mess down there. You still got kids there. No, you're too old.
I don't know, I don't know.
That's gonna be...
When does the first school bell ring in the mornings? Anybody?
Eight o'clock.
At eight?
Yeah.
I think it's like seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, yeah.
Yeah. They start at seven forty-five instead of eight?
They're supposed to be there by a certain time.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it'll be a...
Oh, no, they did say that all of them don't come the very same time. He said, "I'm there every morning at fifteen minutes after seven." But he said, "Some of our workers will get there right at eight." He said, "We're, we're in, we consider ourselves an eight-to-five operation." But they won't all be coming at the exact same time. And they won't all be leaving exactly at the same time. But the big bulk of them will be coming and going around eight and leaving around five.
It's not gonna bother that afternoon, you know, because the school will be out and going. Of course, now, I tell you something else. I guess you noticed at five o'clock out here, federal mogul lets out. And you've gotta jump on this road at five o'clock. They got a lot of people working down there.
This is right there near the Walmart, too.
Yeah, that's right. Well, we want the jobs and we want, but, you know.
Well, that's gonna be coming up. I just wanted to make y'all aware that that's in action right now. And we'll be coming up for a public hearing. And we'll have to get that published before it comes up. It won't make this Monday night meeting, but it'll be coming up in the near future. Let's see. Jail property. I've met twice with the commissioners concerning the land on the Bedford Park that was desirable. They would like to have the piece of property, this five point fourteen acres of, let's see, five point fourteen acres, that right there, to put the jail on that's next door to the Department of Pensions. And then they'd like to have a first option on the next one in case the judicial complex can be built that'll accommodate the jail. I think it's a two-step thing now. The jail will be built first and then the judicial thing. They'd like first right of refusal on that next piece of property. So what we'd like to do is, for certain favors from the county, we'd like to let them have five point fourteen acres of land to build a jail. And they had the land tested today to see if it would withstand a foundation. The land test went really well. They didn't find any places where there was surface water or problems like that. I'll show you where that property is. Five fourteen, that piece right there. Here's your Department of Pensions, that's the lake. Here's your Department of Pensions. And then this would be the site.
The DHR will let go of the land with you.
This is the site. This is the, that's the end of it. Right there. The street ends right here.
Which one they want an option of?
Five fourteen. Number like twelve. And they want an option on this lot.
Cut this one off over here or what?
No, we got, we got a road into it right here. And we got a road running down the side.
That's a pretty good, a pretty good gift from the DHR. Actually, it was the edge of where this is.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a road between them and, no.
That road down to the river. Well, I had a fellow call me about it today, talking about it. And I said, "Well, if, if you wanna trade, you just want us to give it to you." I said, "How about trading us the property you've got and maybe we could work out a deal and just trade with you?" And of course, that's not what they want to do. They want a gift out of it. And...
Well, we'll want something out of it, you know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they're not...
We pay lots of fees every year to the, to the county for lockup fees and that kind of thing. We'd want definite, we got valuable property. We'd want some waivers on them fees for a certain period of time till we recover.
That's a county project, too.
Yeah.
Still receive. Yeah, yeah, it's a county project. I said, "Are you wanting that to trade what you've got?" Then I said, "You've got property." And I said, "To me, it looks like, since you're not gonna use that property anymore and you want the property," I said, "A trade would sound better probably if you wanted the vice canceled." But it's not what we'd like to do is give us that, city is give us that property, build it on. I said, "Well..." The fee system would eat up a lot pretty quick, wouldn't it?
I'm telling you. We pay lots of money out to the county.
Well, that's a good way to speak to get your money back, get the money back and...
Dispatch fees, lockup fees.
Oh, yeah.
Communications fees.
That's what I'm saying.
This picture, now, is some of this not waverly now or what's bucking there? How, how is this? I'm trying to figure out.
All this up here, all this up here is...
This is, okay, it's cut off. This would be, okay, so this is what went with that.
Here's where you go into it and you come on around, your DOT's down in here. Come on around and here's Sataill and they've got some land in behind. There's the Lake Pensions Department, then the next locks.
Well, I'd like to help them out. I'd like to help them, but when we start...
How the bill that should start in the picture? Obviously, oh, because that's still live service now and the water is flowing in this picture.
The county's got property.
No, it's a lot of stuff. That's on the map.
And they don't return, yeah, we need something in return.
It was on a file cabinet.
You have to write the property.
Found it. Here's the descriptions and codexes and just property description, all that stuff. But it's not up to date.
Had to fill it out by hundred. And that would eat you pretty fast.
But they're, they're trying to move forward. It's been a real plague for them to find a way to pay for a jail. And I'm thinking it may be quite a while before the judicial system gets moved over there. They've got a courthouse already and, you know, making all that debt. I mean, I don't know when that'll happen. It could happen through a miracle in some way. They may find the money. But it's been a plague just finding the money to build a jail.
To get started though, I think. That's where it starts, is get us, give them the land and then they'll, they'll have that much. I said, "Well, I don't know about that." I said, "I've heard it's been talked about before." But I said, "I was thinking y'all had some land down there around the airport." And the last I heard about it, that we considered it way years, a few years ago. And we considered just trading with you. And we'd have the land out there for it, even though you'd be getting the best deal of that. But, but as far as just giving you, they want to give them the land, that's what they managed to. And they got a problem the county had and I, I'd like to help them. Because they don't have any money and they've got to do something about the jail.
Yeah, they got a double portion down there now.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we, you know, we all are for them because it's part of our county.
The, the thing that happens, of course, we pay for it, but we don't have to run a jail right now. The city don't have to run a jail. And I, I really appreciate the fact that they'll let us house our prisoners in that jail. I don't want to ever own a jail.
But then if you have a problem and the federal government steps in, y'all may have to ship your prisoners to another county. So imagine having to pick up a Hamilton prisoner and go to Walker County or Franklin County to drop them off.
And pay them.
You would have to transport them, is what I'm saying.
You'd have to pay them so much money.
That's right. So it's benefiting you too.
Yeah, that's, that's really what I'm saying. We don't need, we, we need to work something out, I guess.
We need to make it work because it's a benefit, this direct benefit to the city to have a jail that will house our prisoners. And unfortunately, we have to make arrests almost daily and put somebody in the, in the cadibus. Not what we like to do, it's just what we have to do. So I'd like for y'all to think on that and we're gonna need to meet again on it at our next work session. Let's try to have our minds clear enough to make a decision so we can...
Like you said, I don't think we can just say no because if we do, we're gonna be building us a jail or something or sales and having it running. Because they've got us kinda in a spot.
It's, this property has infrastructure. It has sewer and water and the other amenities that streets.
And it's outside.
Yeah.
What's the industrial board's thoughts?
Well, they've not said no to it. It's not, I think they've mentioned that we have allowed that park become multi-use, not just industry alone. So there's some way that they're thinking, maybe it's not such a bad thing. They especially like the fact that there might be an actual judicial system that works over there one day. That was more appealing than just having a jail there. So...
Getting some of them out of courthouse. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, similarly, it'd be similar. It would just be not for all the county offices, but it'd have the DA and the...
They don't have to transport prisoners from the jail to the courthouse and back and forth.
Yeah, you'd welcome to the courthouse.
Whatever happened to that feller? Hasn't wanted to be on that motor truck still?
The gut mine have a... They've got mine have a, a complex that would take care of the court system over there by the jail, but right now, they're trying to get a jail built on this five point one four acres.
Well, they need it, I understand, I haven't been in it, but I don't wanna be with it. But I understand it's really bad.
I'd rather hear about it than be in and see.
That's true, I'll check the hand information. Right, they say it's bad. You wouldn't have your say there?
Well, let's be, let's be seriously thinking about that, and I'm gonna try to have the industrial board thinking on it, too. Uh, we got one new operator certified or, that will be seeing certified pass the test this week, and we had one that did not, so we're still, still an operator that has his hours in, but hasn't passed his test yet. Uh, and each of these guys had to go back and take the test again, they're a pretty hard test. Uh, we've, uh, got a new operator, potentially, at a water treatment, our wastewater treatment man hasn't passed his yet, but he's gonna continue to school and try to go back and get that certification soon. But these tests are not easy.
Take three in that box now. Make sure you sign off for y'all. Here you go. Yeah, I think I did. I don't think so.
One of them, one of them, one of them, he wasn't here.
Oh, he wasn't here. Folks here, no lookout, we're ahead of them.
Um, I think our operator, our actual employee handbook says that these guys are allowed to have the city pay for a test when they go to take these tests. But, but we've, right now, we've paid for both the tests that these guys have taken. Uh, I really would like to see us amend the handbook to where we pay for at least two tests. These are tough tests, and maybe after the second test if they haven't passed, maybe the employee look at picking up their own, uh, test costs. It's about three hundred and twenty-five dollars to certify, to take these certified tests.
The last administration's the one that put the limits on it. Prior to that, they could take them as many times and the city did not pay, but last administration put a limit on it, we pay for one test, and after that, it's up to the individual to pay.
I didn't realize when I came into office how tough these tests have gotten, and a lot of guys don't pass it the first time, they don't even know what to expect when they get there. A lot of times, the hundred questions are not in their everyday oper- what they do daily at their job site, and, and they haven't been exposed, and I think it's expecting too much for a person to just go down there and ace this test or even pass it first time. I know our man that passed yesterday, he was right in the middle of his test, here walks in somebody that's getting, taking open book tests, they sit on by it and start flipping pages back and forth, hunting their answers, and them trying to sit there and take a test as a computer screen, most distracting thing ever been. He only liked a few points the first time, getting his test passed, and second time, he went down there and passed it fine, but, uh, very distracted. Things can happen, sometimes you go take a test and you, you're just, you're just not ready for it somehow.
Is there a amount of times that they can take them and not pass it or...
I really don't know.
Is there a amount of time that they can work and not be certified?
They have to, like, if they take it twice and, and fail it both times, they have to go back so many hours back to school and get so many hours of schooling before they go take it the next time.
Yeah, they can't just run down there a few minutes to take a test, they got one, go through it later.
A lot of law enforcement, you have to have like a separation in between the time you do your physical disability test.
If you have a man went, 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 never did pass, he might want to consider, he's not gonna be an operator, he might be something else for your group, and he, he may not be an operator, so I don't know. But these guys have got to serve an apprenticeship, they've been putting in their hours, you know, they're showing up for work every day and they're paid for their jobs, you just haven't been able to get their test passed, or yesterday, we got one pass, the other man we sent didn't make it for the second time, so... But unless we amend the handbook, it looks like these guys are gonna have to pay for their test. And I, we're, the idea is, we're trying to get them certified, and I, just so they can do it all in one time at a bare expense, I think it's a little tough on them. I'd like to see us change that to at least two.
I think if you change it, you can't make it go backwards, it can't be retroactive, it would have to be going forward. I mean, I don't know that you can undo.
Good question. I don't know if there's exactly no answer to that one either. Guess if we send this, we'll go back and cover these guys, we could cover them, but we'd probably have to put it words, you know, I don't think it would retro, I don't think there's anything we could do.
Well, the county the other day retroactively paid employees, so... For the Christmas holidays, I think. It seems a little more federally mandated than how many times they pass the test.
We may run that one by Scott before we try to discuss it in a way of, of, of over or anything.
Sammy, don't come over here with our questions.
You got anything today, Angela?
I'm gonna, just a couple of things, I know, if y'all noticed, it's time to file your statement of economic interest again with the Ethics Commission. You can do that online or you have those forms you can fill out and mail in.
Here, oh, that's what I saw, we didn't...
Yeah, you know, you have to do that every year if you're an elected official or a department head, so those need to be done as soon as you can get them done, and if you don't care, let me know when you have finished that. And I wanted to clarify one thing on the salaries for, like, increase in the salaries if we decide to do that for the mayor and council. I wasn't here, I think that's when I had the flu, the last work session, but, um, going by the municipal election calendar, February twenty-fifth is the deadline for y'all to vote to increase the next administration's, to increase their pay. You can't vote yourself a raise, and it wouldn't take place in this fiscal budget year. By doing that, y'all could just vote to, to increase, if you want to increase the pay for the council members and the mayor, we would just need to do that before February the twenty-fifth. It would not go into effect until November, when the new administration took office, if we increase it. We don't have to, but if we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it, because that's, it was done for y'all in advance, it was raised and it has to be done six months before the election. And the previous administration did it, they didn't take, they didn't vote themselves a raise, they didn't, it didn't go into effect till y'all took office. If that's something y'all want to do, we'll need to do that before February the twenty-fifth. And that's all that I have.
Is all of this just for me, just one person?
I ain't some.
Seven pages of it. What if I'm not gonna run?
You still have to do it, 'cause you're in office right now, 'cause you're, and you will be filing on your two thousand and nineteen year, so...
Better figure it out, you better figure it out.
Yeah, 'cause they'll, they'll come after you if you don't, so...
Why they come in?
I don't know, I've never had to see them coming, so...
Marson said that Ethics conducted one of his friends and told him it'd be ten thousand dollars a day.
They gonna take your safety. I'll fill this thing out. Yeah, glad, I'll get on it tonight.
Who's that in this?
They got a mob attention, too, he started looking at me. One of the two there, see, I'm gonna get my mouth. I'm checking, though.
Yeah, I got it.
Appreciate y'all coming to these work sessions, I'm sorry that Mr. McKenzie Jones didn't show up after he contacted me and asked to make his presentation. He somehow couldn't be with us today, I don't, he didn't explain why, he just said he'd like to come to our work session, I told him when it would be.
Now, is he gonna present for the old city hall and everything he looked at that day or is he just coming from ball field?
Well, he's got those numbers, I think, but he said he, he understood that our main interest was in, not necessarily our buildings, but we told him at that time that we'd have all new LED lighting at the rec center, but I think they've concentrated more on the ball fields, but he's not here talking for himself, so I guess I'll have to wait till he gets here to know.
Well, I think these meetings are real important to the council, wherever the next council is or whatever, I think this is important, that you sit down and talk about it before you get there. You kinda have your mind made up then.
I feel like this is valuable for all of us to sit down and talk together, share information and discuss issues.
Thanks, gracious.
I really, really appreciate y'all working faithfully for the love of our community.